This meeting in the city of Kingston, the zoning board's appeals are now coming to order. It is six eleven. My name is Brian Cafferty, I'm chairing the proceedings. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board appeals function. It's comprised of five members and two alternates. That's not entirely true right at the moment. We do have a new alternate, an old alternate. You hear about that? All right. Great. It's good news. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform the service to the best of our abilities on a volunteer unpaid basis. Still need to speak to somebody about that. The other four members are, please introduce yourselves.
Anthony Cafferty.
Colin Donaldson.
Carl Lekker.
Right. And I'm Brian Cafferty and we have this alternate coming on. You're back on to the committee, so that's kind of exciting. So there will be a public comment period this evening after each hearing request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point and also as to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members and not other speakers or audience members. A professional demeanor will be expected. And with that, we've got a couple of things that we need to clear up. There are folks from Claritin Drive, isn't it?
Claritin.
Claritin. Excuse me. So there was a little mix up here. It was an effort to try and get your item added to the agenda. And we will add it to the agenda in that if you're willing to just share with us what the application is for. But we're not going to be able to have a public hearing on it tonight because the notice for it didn't go out in time. So that was a mix up. So we're going to have that, have you come back next month to actually hear it. So does that work for you?
What we got, Paul Jankovitz is representing.
Oh, that'll work. Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we can do. It was a clerical mix up and it's, and I really, really apologize. But in order for a public hearing to be scheduled, there has to be a public advance notice of that hearing in order for it to be a legitimate public hearing. Because we do that, totally our fault, not yours. We're gonna have to have you come back next month. I apologize for that. But we will at least add to the agenda if you want to just share with us or we can just dispense with that and have you just come back next month.
Okay. Cause I'm tonight.
Okay.
Now, can I ask one question?
Sure.
The situation that exists right now will just continue until after the public hearing and the decision is made.
Now, because you're an attorney, you only get one question.
Easy.
So that was it?
That was the architect's question.
Just kidding. All right. So all those in favor of adding the Claritin avenue item to the agenda for the applicant to just at least share with us what it's about, raise their hand.
Yeah, I'm fine. Presentation.
Okay. Good. All right. So did somebody, did somebody make a first on that? Was that you, Ken? Sure. It's gonna be your first.
Make a mark into.
Is there a second on that?
Make a second position.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. All right. So we'll go a little out of order and we'll, let me first just approve the minutes. I mean, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four?
Yeah. So I guess we didn't approve those minutes at the last, our last meeting?
Well, our last one wasn't, that was an informational presentation, so it wasn't an official meeting. So it was basically to present information and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought we still could, we did take some minutes. I don't remember. But yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the July. July, right, that's right. Yeah, July.
It's from July eleventh to two thousand twenty-four.
Can't you refer first on that? Do I have a second?
That's gonna be you, Brian. Carl and Colin, what's your?
Yeah, I don't know if we can actually carry that because we don't have, there's not enough people at that meeting.
We're gonna have to dispense with that until the next meeting then.
Well, they can technically vote on it, but.
Yeah, I guess, or they don't have any knowledge of it, right? Yeah.
It's correct.
Yeah.
But let's just, let's just deal with that next meeting. So it's done according to HOYO. So we'll put that off for right now. And Anthony, you're gonna make a great bureaucrat one day.
We're gonna put that motion to.
I'll make a motion to table the four of July minutes until next month.
All second.
We're on second, right?
To table.
Just gotta say it. I said, okay. Well, you know, yeah. Matt just talks, he doesn't get to vote.
It just provides advice. Sometimes listen to yourself.
I heard they only let forty make one pass.
With the exception of our lawyer. It's totally not fair. Anyhow. And so Anthony, I'm trying to keep up with these notes. Anthony, you made the motion to table?
Yeah.
First. All right. And the second came from? All right. Okay. Let's get. I'll be on favor. Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right. Owner applicant, A R C Mid Hudson, four seventy-one Albany Avenue, Kingston, New York. Are you in the house?
I am in the house. Just sit, explain?
Yeah, I mean, you can come up here if you want or you can do it from there. It's up to you.
Pretty straightforward. My name is Joe Byrd here on the timely signs. I'm representing the A R C Mid Hudson.
Thought I recognized you, Mr. Byrd. Been here before.
Couple times, couple times. I've got a couple of great people. Seeking a variance for increased monument size forty-four inches high by forty-eight inches wide to forty-eight by sixteen inches. Moving illumination from exterior illuminated to interior illuminated. And can probably explain in the drawings and see, you'll see an area that says changeable content. I just wanted to explain that a little bit. It's not changeable copy in terms of text. The reason that A R C is seeking a variance is they'd like to promote public messaging. This panel would be internally illuminated as the rest of the monument would be. But it's not something that changes every day, doesn't change on a regular basis. It's to promote hiring opportunities, community events, things like that, probably not either monthly or one quarter of the basis. It's just a small corrugated plastic insert that slides in and out, still is able to bite through, but expensive. Changeable piece that is, if you do four color process, actually digitally print something that's a little bit more appealing. An example of that, if anyone's on Ulster Avenue, Rhonda Savings Bank uses this, a similar version for their branch out on Ulster Avenue next to their climate temperature unit. There's just a changeable piece. So it looks, you know, it's small, from eighteen and a half by forty inches wide. So it's not, you know, tremendous amount of space, but definitely a comparison impact.
And so currently the sign, you know, my asking, is not an internal, internally illuminated sign? Right. It's the kind of sign that we all love, which is illuminated from the outside.
It's, it has a hood on top. Unfortunately, it has not been lit for a while. So it's, it's not illuminated, not illuminated publicly at this point. It's just a disrepair and, you know, the ultimate goal is to make it look a little bit more modern and in keeping with. They've done some renovations to the building in terms of the outside, they've resurfaced all the stuff out. They cleaned the building. They were looking at doing a positive conventional weather set on the building, but instead of that, they'd rather focus their effort down on the inside.
Okay. Well, let's start with you, Anthony, with your thoughts on this.
Well, I mean, there's a couple of different issues here and, you know, the biggest of which is that, you know, simple repair determination. Signs is that this is a use variance, right? And that being said, the applicant would have to submit a financial data to show that they would need, they can't get a reasonable rate of return. This variance, since it is a pre-existing non-conforming sign, the existing sign could be reused in its existing space.
So it can't be used variance.
This is, this is why.
So this came up last time with this sign. And basically.
Trial.
Yes. The Arizona enforcement services categorizes use variance as saying that it's a different use. There, and obviously you guys know the distinction required for a use variance as opposed to an area variance. There is, they're having good arguments and good case law distinguishing and saying these types of changes in signs would more appropriately be considered area variance. But it's up to you, you guys are not bound to go by the determination of the Z E O. You guys can say, you know, we consider this, we agree with the Z E O, consider that a use variance is needed. Or you guys can disagree and say that we believe that this would more appropriately, you know, we interpret that it would require an area variance as opposed to a use variance. And then you would have to outline the perimeter or parameters of that variance.
Okay. So for now, let's just put a pin in whether it's a use variance or an area variance and how we're gonna rule with regard to that. But what are your other concerns about this? Some assumptions, some regulations?
Well, I would, I would think, you know, firstly, that, you know, why is a, you know, why is a sign that would be permitted under the code not, not work in this scenario? Would be a sign that a building would be allowed, right? Without any modifications. So I'd like to hear a little bit about that. I understand this is a pre-existing monument that they're running out. This, right, the concrete pit is, you're not proposing to change, right? Yeah. So I kind of understand the desire for it to still be there. But if there's gonna be an investment in the sign, you know, we have science standards, you know, within our plan and code. So, you know, why, why not have a sign that already meets or has a minimum variance required to meet the plan and code that we already have?
And that's for, for a building sign?
Yeah, 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 yeah. There's a whole, whole section in science here on what, what kind of signs could fit in what, on what kind of the buildings and what phases.
So one of the challenges at this particular location on Albany Avenue, you know, on this setback, probably, let me allow myself, probably at least forty to fifty feet. They've got a slope or pitch roof from the front. They also have a pretty, pretty large tree line across the front approaching from at least the traffic circle direction. You can even see, you know, one of the suggestions I would make, you know, when I put this, put this into play is you're gonna need to do something, you know, trees in terms of just making sure it's visible. So that's one of the things that, gotta take at least one of the branches down on some of the trees. But the building itself, as you approach from the traffic circle, really isn't visible until you're almost past it. It's a, it's a fairly difficult intersection, near intersection. You've got, you know, Kentucky Fried Chicken, you've got the Stewart's. Yeah. There's a lot of visual clutter and to actually turn and see, see the building facia would be a little bit more difficult, which is I think why they went with the monument. If the floor is underground, it's visible from both directions and maybe perfectly clear to.
Yeah. It's very part of the course of architecture of the time, which is. Not, not a particular aesthetic that I'm adhering to.
Have you, I'm familiar, I just pulled it up on Google.
Yeah, 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 I know the building and space, yeah. Yeah, it's a.
You have, what are your thoughts?
Colin? Thoughts?
Considering it's an existence, there is an existing sign there. I don't really see a huge problem with that. I understand promoting a business. The visibility there is pretty terrible.
I understand not to, I, I understand the desire not to try and do nicely the building, given the way it's set back and everything. To me, there's a perfectly good sign there that is an existing non-conforming use. You know, I, my feeling would be, why not just simply reuse it? I am, I do not like interior lit signs. They're a nuisance. They're distracting there. And there's a reason why they're pretty much uniformly across Ulster County. There's very few places that allow them anymore. So, but yeah, so my feeling is, is that, I mean, I can, I appreciate that they would wanna have a mechanism to have some ability to change, like riders, different rider changes. That, I'm assuming the reason why the new proposed sign has a larger surface area is to accommodate the rider.
So there's, there's two items there. And so I would say, you know, in terms of the internally illuminated sign, that's a sign, that's a sign. I don't think that internally illuminated signs are frowned upon throughout Ulster County, specifically in this district. You've got, you've got Kentucky Fried Chicken that has a free standing. You've got Casa Villa, which is a restaurant, which is even further into the residential area. There's several other, I mean, you're just, you're in the area where you're just crossing into commercial traffic. So I would, I would say that in keeping with that transfer, the internally illuminated sign, I definitely understand that it's lit, but in terms of where it is in a commercial district or approaching a commercial district, we'd like to carve that out. I do think that it's appropriate in this particular location. There are no, doesn't have any residential space directly across from it. There's, you know, you've got Bagel Shop, you've got, I think it's Massey's Plaza. Where you've got, there's Catch Fox in place and several other locations there. So there are illuminated signs that are competing in this. In terms of the overall size, it does, you know, some of that does call for the changeable content piece. One of the aspects that the art has done over the past, this was three years ago, they changed their logo. I'm particularly not fond of it in the sense that they have very specific guidelines. That was one of the challenges when we actually did a full, you know, investigation trying to build a, a building sign up. And what you see currently in terms of how that logo is treated on the, onto the monument is exactly what has to be used against, you know, from a graphic design standpoint, it has to have those proportions. The swish has to be exactly like this. The art has to be proportioned to it. Mid Hudson, New York has to be, they haven't really given the sign companies or any of their agencies the ability to really venture out. You can't move the swish to the front like you traditionally see in some other, other companies where they have a horizontal. Where they, they provide you with a series of logos that are acceptable. Not anything that, you know, it's your fault or my fault.
As I was gonna say, perhaps they should have consulted the codes before they changed their logo so that they couldn't actually potentially reuse the sign. So you're telling me that the aspect ratio of the existing non-conforming use sign won't accommodate that logo?
No, no, it will.
Okay.
But if you took that logo and you placed in that space, it would actually be significant. You would actually see it be reduced smaller than what it is. I'm not saying that's the driving force by any, by any point, but I'm just saying in terms of the way that Ulster Green A R C was, was laid out originally, their new logo does present some challenges in terms of.
I mean, not for nothing, but pretty much art, A R C is pretty understood. I'm not so sure its identity is that logo. So, but, you know, if it can work on that sign, it seems to make sense. What are your thoughts?
Well, the new one, the four seventy-one, is that illuminated or is that?
No, no, that's, to be honest with you, that doesn't even need to appear. It was just an idea of putting none of the address, non-illuminated, just pen out letters for fire purposes and gas purposes.
I, I agree on a building would not be as visible as out here. You don't see the old sign at all. Is there a reason why it hasn't been illuminated for a long period of time or?
I just, I think it's a disrepair. I know that.
So is the new one gonna be kept up or no?
I hope so. I have no control of that, but I can assure you that it's gonna be, it would be a beautiful sign. There are ways that we can, I mean, if there are different situations where the compromise is to reduce, let's say the, you know, be part of this is there's some, what we call half round legs on the side. That can be taken away. That takes away the shade. We could reduce the size. We could even bring, you know, the changeable content panel down a little bit from eighteen point five. You know, if it's a height situation, you know, I think there's any type of compromise, but the, you know, the existing sign is dated. It's got a dated look and feel to it. Even if they wanted to utilize the existing sign, definitely be made. So it would, we could, we fabricate something that looks identical to it? Absolutely. But.
One of the other issues that we have, if you're gonna entertain something lit at all, is we also have lighting standards. All right. So if you're gonna light it, anything that's, any direct source of light is not prohibited under the code. So that sign is directly lit and you can't look at the source of the light directly, it has to be shielded. So if that light projects any amount of light onto the ground, it needs to be shielded if it's visible from the street. So there's no place where an internally lit sign in the city of Kingston is allowed under any circumstances in this matter. Right? And if you were to light it in such a way that, I could imagine this could be redesigned similar to the way that the Kingston Plaza sign was redone on, on Clayton. In that scenario though, the, the light emitted from the sign could not exceed two candle feet. Per, per the, per the lighting standards.
How is it currently that it's lit under that balance?
If, if it's, if the light is shielded, you can't see the light source, it's a light.
No, you just said it. How is it currently? How is the current sign lit, that under that balance? That?
It is.
Okay. Well, that, that solves that problem.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's actually easy on the eyes.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think the current situation would shine light on the ground before the internally lit one would.
The internally lit one would be much brighter. Yeah. And direct eye, well, you know, you're driving down a road, you see those like lit signs, like the amount of contrast when you're seeing or when you're walking is way worse. And the, and a sign like this or any direct light source like this is terrible for pedestrian safety because at night it creates a poor contrast where you can't see people walking down the street. So once you have a shielded lit something, it creates ambient light. That lights all the things in the surrounding. It doesn't project light in a direct space, it creates less contrast, which makes things easier to see.
So really quick question. You mentioned the sign for Kingston Plaza on Albany Avenue. What if we reversed, instead of having the entire face lit for the A R C Mid Hudson, New York? What if just the letters, the A R C and the swish lit?
I think that that might be something that we could.
It'd be like a knockout face, basically. So for Kingston Plaza, all you see is the, the Kingston Plaza and the Chevron. Those are the only things that light at night and the face itself in the evening would be, would be dark. Still internally illuminated, but it has, lends the effect of just an illuminated letters as opposed to an illuminated, full illuminated face.
Well, that, I mean, that's a potential compromise. And, you know, we, you know, we wanna be, we wanna be helpful, but this, this thing is one big plastic illuminated sign is a no-go for me.
Yeah. I hired, I knew.
Yeah. So if that were a compromise, would we still be able to give them? Now, the changeable content on the bottom is not just a white band with like red copy. It's, you know, an image of, you know, people helping someone that's sitting higher or something along those lines. It's not, you know, I would, I would say that the top with a full white background, it's, it's not that. The bottom changeable. But the bottom changeable will be eliminated from the entire inside, the eighteen and a half by forty eight. And the top, just the logo on it.
Now, when you say changeable, it's changeable by a, a computer?
No.
No, these are just.
They gave that to you and we were like, that's never gonna happen.
Yeah, no.
That's not, it's a changeable corrugated plastic piece. So on like a quarterly basis.
Right, that's what I thought you said.
Walkway over the Hudson. You know, they would do, or in Otis Quonk, they would put a panel in for, you know, three months in advance.
All right. And what, if, if you were to internally light the, the logo and the A R C print, the typography there, would you also provide some light to light the rest of the sign?
So the only, so the only thing that would be lit would be the changeable panel at the bottom, which would be, that would be internally illuminated and it would just be a panel that lights up the bottom. There would be no like up lighting or down lighting. It would just be, it's what you would see during the day. And then in the evening, the A R C black is either a day night vinyl, so it appears dark during the day. But in the evening, when light shines through it, the letters return, become white. And.
Yeah, I don't like that too much, but, yeah.
I mean, there's that same way that you could make, in terms of this logo with the black and white background, in the evening to reverse it, you're just gonna have a swish light translucent as it appears. You wouldn't get any contrast, so letters during the evening would have to light white.
Yeah.
Now.
I mean, one of the saying that, that, you know, even if we're talking about that right now, it needs to be considered, it's like, is there a scenario where that would need and total illumination available from that sign is not more than two candle feet?
More than two candle feet?
Yeah. There's no way.
I, I don't think that it would be. I don't, I don't think that that would work and which case then you would need more variances in order to do that, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Is there a sign in Kingston that's a little bit on Albany Avenue that's less than two candle feet?
No, but they predate the, the current code. And, and, you know, thank goodness, and I will say, even though there are many things out there in the visible landscape that I would like to see go away. But we are not allowed to do that. We can't just say to somebody, when the code changes and you have to have an electrical outlet, you know, every one foot instead of two. Okay, we don't make everybody owns a house and outlets. But, you know, we, we. But, you know, we, we endeavor over time to improve the landscape. And that's exactly what we're doing here is we're trying to avoid making what, you know, and I know that you disagree. And that's totally okay. Everybody has, um, their opinion. But it's, these things, these eternally, internally lit plastic signs. Um, I know you say they're not, um, uh, reviled by the Bronx County, but they're, they're, they're not very popular. Um, and they, they're a source of light pollution. Um, there are, they, and there's enough of them out there that do create this situation where it makes it more difficult for drivers to see pedestrians and.
I gotta be honest with you, I could argue that a curb out on Clinton Avenue that we just put in is far more intrusive to the city of Kingston residents than the sign.
You might not be wrong, you might not be wrong about that.
I should go on a limb and say.
Yeah. You might, uh, you might not be wrong about that.
Several projects in the city of Kingston.
You might not be wrong about that, but.
Certain parking circumstances down Broadway that I would almost argue against the fact that this being.
It's apples and oranges though. Totally, apples and oranges, but, and, and I understand what you're saying. Um, yeah, I saw that myself and, and that'll be interesting to see how that works out.
But, I mean, but here. Driveover curbs are designed for that.
So can you answer this question? What if we conlight the sign? What if we downlight the sign with the exact same sign, but down lighting on it?
I like the downlighting.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I like about the original sign.
So you basically have the same, same design, design, it would just be slightly bigger.
I would probably wanna reduce it just not to make it, I, I don't wanna go too mu, too much taller, because I don't wanna get too far into the tree line. So it would, or I wouldn't wanna get too much.
It's the existing sign. It would be the same design as the, I mean, obviously the sign face would be different.
No, what he's saying is, what if they do roughly this sign, a little smaller, but light it like this is.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I would take off, I would take off probably the dead roof, round, half rounds on the side, just because they would, what we would do is we put some type of, similar to this, low profile. And we downlight the whole thing.
Yeah, I, 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 I like signs that are illuminated either down or up from the ground.
There's a city of preference down there.
I think down's better.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you know, according to our code, the light, the light source just can't be directly built. Um, so it doesn't really matter if it's down or up, just as long as you're standing on the street, you can't see the light.
So the ones that are mounted on the ground would have to be totally shrouded and just pointed at the sign.
Yeah, I mean.
You can't have any light bleeding out from it.
Right, yeah, yeah, and, and you can look at, um, uh, four oh five fourteen J for that information in our, in our code.
But, well, what I, what I'm gonna propose we do at this juncture is, I'm happy for you, you know, for us to just table this, have you come back with a new proposed design.
I can bring you the tables of other signs similar to that, with the downlight.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, we'd be, I, I, is, how do we feel about that? That, um, we just, um, because I, I think that that might be a good compromise. And will allow the A R C to achieve its ultimate goal, which is to be visible.
But the size of the sign, in terms of being free size, um, is just, it's sixty inches.
Well, I mean, so any change, well, let's see, let's, let's see, um, so how big, um, is it totally, is the total science area more than fifty square feet figure?
Like that for both sides?
Yeah.
So it's four foot by five foot seven.
So that.
Five, five by six.
So freestanding signs, then you would not need a variance on the sign's size. If we don't consider this a use variance and we would only consider a lighting. If, 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 if we, uh, so we would need to, I'm talking about this, maybe we'll do this later. But if we, i- in the event that we, that we collectively decide that this is not a use variance, that this is an area problem, then the, then we are rejecting Eric's determination and then, um, uh, well, actually, so this, they, then they.
I would say that you would then be deciding that you're allowing for a new sign instead of being attached to the wall to be a freestanding sign.
Yeah, and then it'd meet, it'd meet the standard, yeah.
And go through the criteria for the area variance and.
Yeah, but, and then they would have to meet this, the, the, um, the, the requirements for freestanding sign of which, as you're describing it, it seems like it would be.
Yeah.
Um, so. I'm sure the mechanics of how we do that, but that's, that's.
So you're saying that it's fifty square feet, but that's both sides of the sign?
For a freestanding.
For a freestanding sign. Alright, so that's twenty-five square feet aside.
Yeah, that's under that.
And it's under that.
Yeah, it's under that, so, so it would be fine if we, if we, if we make a determination that allows them to put a freestanding sign under our code. What the downlit side sign of that size seems like it would meet this based on the verbal description.
Sounds like a good solution.
Yeah, maybe, um, maybe we just have to chat later about how we can make that.
How we can make that.
Do that.
I would just word it, um, basically that you're granting an area variance to allow the sign to be located. Um, and its current location as opposed to on the building. So it's not like a specific amount of feet, but.
Well, I would just say that we, we are allowing, you know, four oh five seventeen G to be applicable in this situation, which would be the requirements of for a freestanding sign. So it's just, we're, yeah.
Okay, in the interest of saving some time here, something we can talk about. Make, you know, I, I got a motion to table, okay.
Who's making the motions table?
He made the motion.
Yeah, sorry.
So external illumination, downlight, sun, back and then.
Downlight and. So, yeah.
Great, well, we're, we're just tabling.
We're just tabling.
We're gonna, we're gonna come back and we'll do well all that other stuff. Um, you know, that's, we don't need to debate that right now. Come on. And all those in favor? Aye.
Yep.
You are.
Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Wasn't there, okay. I'm the neighbor in fact.
Oh, oh, you had something to say about that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, but I actually came about something else. Uh, there, they put in two pallets in lights by.
Now, lighting pollution is a real thing.
It's a total problem.
It's like a, a hundred, you can read the newspaper on my front yard.
I'm, I'm sorry.
The arc building, what's on the arc building? Yes, I live on Colson Avenue.
Call the building department, you complain about that, that'd be a violation of rights.
They put in two on Rockefeller. Rockefeller side.
Yeah.
And you, I can count, there's houses on Madison, and I can count pine, uh, pine cones on it.
I bet, I bet you can.
Yeah, you know, do that. Call the building department, let them know that there's a problem, um, with that, because they were probably installed incorrectly. It sounds like they were.
Mine's.
Um, and.
LED lights and all.
They'll have to deal with that. I, I mean, I have a neighbor who feels, that, that, they think that their building needs to be lit up like stall like thirteen.
Yeah, well, in that case, I'll lay like your.
Yeah, uh, if you want, if you wanna look it up, um, there's a section, lighting standards in our code, you can get this on the building department website. And then you can know exactly where to find it.
Have a good evening.
Okay.
Questions, um, before you guys go on to, uh, the next thing on here. The application listed for old business, is there anyone here for that, the?
Charlie Diamond.
Jeff Sprig, who are?
Did you get a clarification from Eric on that?
Yeah, I'm saying it's, uh, pre-existing, non-conforming. They, they said they were gonna keep the same.
Yeah, yeah.
And just put it back, just changing.
So how do you want?
But, but if that's pre-existing, non-conforming, then, then, then planning takes care of that. We don't have to do anything about that.
At the moment, but we didn't need to do. There's no need for us to keep putting on.
Right.
That's just why I wanted that, so, so unless they come back with a new application or.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay, so I should take it off the agenda?
I told them they should workshop that sign, which actually putting on it, but that's marketing and advertising. Not, not our purview. Just trying to save them from themselves.
I grew up in that neighborhood, that's why I hold on the ground.
Andy, if I, am I losing my mind or did I forget that you guys were gonna like tell us a little about, about this?
They were, yeah.
And I forgot.
Yeah, I don't have a chance to, to get clarification, because before that starts, since you guys aren't gonna be voting, I have to go to another zone of appeals meeting, which. It's stuff done.
So you want me to finish out the setup?
I, I don't think there's anything else.
There is.
Right, so they can present and I will.
So have a seat up here, who's ever gonna be doing most of the talking. Uh, the attorney, leave him alone.
Yeah.
Just kidding. Come on up to the table.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, oh, um, I'm gonna check if anybody even wants to, uh, maybe get a comment on the sign, on the art.
Um, well, we tabled it, so, um, um, but I'm happy to, before you, you have a seat. Um, so let me ask, is there anybody online or here in the meeting that wants to speak to that sign application? Shocking. I didn't think there was going to be anybody, um, but sorry, I don't wanna make assumptions.
Oh, first, um, yeah, we, we usually get the presentation first.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 and then, and then, and then we'll see if anybody wants to.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but we can't, you can't do that anyway, because there's no public, you can't do the public hearing until next time.
We're not doing the public hearing. We're just gonna hear what they're, what they're talking.
No, we can't, we're not allowed to. Um, no, no, no.
Yeah, there is no public hearing on this.
Right now, we're not allowed to hear the public's input until there's a public notice, yeah. Yeah, so if anybody is here to comment on this, um, uh, you'll have to wait till next.
Clarity now. Would there be anybody here to comment?
They were, they were positive.
Huh?
Doesn't matter.
I'm just.
No, I, I don't know.
That may be the only.
Yeah, but because we're not having a public hearing, we're just not gonna hear public. Alright, go ahead, it's your show.
Okay, um, we're looking for a use variance and a S D, um, district, okay? Um, we have a pre-existing building, no changes to the building itself, physical changes. Um, we have multiple tenants within the building, uh, industrial type tenants, manufacturing type tenants. Uh, they produce everything from countertops to cabinetry in the building. And we have one tenant who is in the building, is a residence, is a single unit. And, and this particular location, uh, it's been selected as part of the Form Bay zone to exclude housing. We have housing across the driveway from this particular lot. We have housing in the neighborhood and why in this particular instance that we exclude in this one district, uh, to permit housing. Now, this is a hardship for the tenant who's there, okay, to be relocated. She's paying, uh, substantially less than market value on the apartment. Um, she is a widower and this is, um, a, a great convenience to her to be able to maintain her residence here. So that's her application basically, is to try and allow this tenant, a single, uh, woman to stay in this apartment, um, without disruption.
Okay, so, um, that's great. Um, I just have one question. Um, because we're not gonna really get into the whole hearing thing. Um, but just a question, how long has this unit been in existence?
This unit, I believe.
Twenty years.
Twenty years?
Yes.
And it, and at the time, and at the time that it was put in, it was a permissible use?
Scott did the drawing on it.
And it got, and it, and it was, and it was, and.
Building permit was gone and. I have one, it's there twenty years.
Okay, well, that, that's very, very important, because it establishes whether this is an existing non-conforming use or not. And if it is, then this is a moot point.
Well, I'm guessing that that happened or.
Well, yeah, I'm, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, you're right, but let me tell you. I'm in the real estate business, I go from town to town to town. And everybody cover their ears and use an expletive, they keep really lousy records.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of times, so, uh, it's crazy. Um, and there's a currently an issue right now going on with the city of Kingston in which, you know, the record keeping is less than stellar. So, you know, so it would not be surprising to me. If Scott Dutton did the plans for this thing, I highly doubt that if they didn't get a permit and it didn't go through the proper channels. But I would imagine that the code enforcement officer that flagged this must have done some homework. You know, but did he just check the computer or did he check the hard file? Um, because a lot of times they do not match up at all. So that's what I, so we need to find that out. Um, and you should check your own records, um, if you have any documentation with regard to that. Actually give Scott Dutton a call and find out if he's got anything on record, because if he did the drawing for it, likely it is he probably showed up at the planning board of the building department and reviewed it with somebody. And he might have, he might have that information, so I would check there in anticipation of your, of.
One of the things, and this page was taken directly from one of A sign code. And it does say that a permitted use here is a carriage house. And a carriage house is defined within the home, one of A zone, as a single unit auxiliary, accessory to the main occupancy.
Yeah, except for it's a separate building.
It can be contained within the building.
On, on the, the, the building design standards.
Yeah, carriage houses are usually attached.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't even know how you could define it, if you mean a carriage house, if it's part of a.
But it's, but it's, it gives me that opportunity for a residence on the slot.
Uh, yeah, well, I personally, my, my opinion is, is your best bet is if you can establish that this was a legitimately built housing unit, then this is a moot point.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's what I would spend some time investigating. Um, and then, uh, we'll come back and hear it next month.
Yeah.
Alright?
Uh, I'll make a motion to table this, um, and, uh, and open a public hearing next, next month on this topic.
This is right by, um, the, uh, the roofing company, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right across the.
It's the, it's the end of the street, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm familiar with. I'm familiar. Wasn't there a brewery back there?
Yes, yeah.
I kept hearing about it. It's not the easiest place in the world to find, and then when I finally found it, there was no beer there. How, how sad is that?
Probably seven dollars a pint.
There's that. We could go on about that.
Who's going second?
I seconded. Tables.
So the next meeting is December twelfth.
We're gonna turn it this month. Thank you.
You, you seconded?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, tabling?
Aye.
I will then make a motion to return. Thank you.
Without the comments, all you people are here from the public, from the neighborhood.
I wouldn't know we're here.
Yeah, we're gonna do this next time.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, we wanna hear. We, we wanna hear it.
Yeah.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, do I have a second on the adjournment?
I second.
There you go.
There, we do now.